All right, good morning. It is 10:00 AM. Welcome to this special meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors, September 29th, 2023. Would you stand, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, county matters, item 1.1, and the only item on our agenda today. And to be reminded that when we come to the point of public comment on a special meeting, public comment is limited to the one item on the agenda, not open to items that are not on the agenda. Item 1.1, adopt a resolution which adopts the final budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, $151,444,249, CAO, Tenth Hill.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning.
Good morning.
So in accordance with the County Budget Act, budget hearings were held on September 25th, 2023, based on direction given at those hearings before you for consideration as a resolution adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2324. The final budget totals $151,444,249 and includes a general fund contingency of $499,380. During budget hearing, staff was directed to bring back a final budget based on the budget presented with minor adjustments. We were asked to increase the general fund or increase revenue to natural resources by $9,500, which reduced the general fund contribution to natural resources by $9,500, and then increased utility expenses in the library by $500. And those, those three changes increased the general fund contingency by $9,000. So that's why the general fund contingency is up $9,000 to $499,380. And also for your awareness, after budget hearings, we went back and further analyzed the animal shelter aspect of the sheriff's budget. By using all available funding sources and options, we were able to reduce the shortfall for animal shelter to approximately $9,500. There are a number of specific line items within the shelter budget where risk can be managed over the remaining nine months of the fiscal year, and I'm very confident the shelter will remain fully operational and staffed throughout the rest of this fiscal year. A formal budget adjustment for the animal shelter operations will be presented to the board on 17 October.
Okay, thank you for that. Questions by board members? Supervisal, Willa, I believe you have some?
Yes. So I think I've heard a lot from folks since our last meeting. I think people came away from that with some concerns, and I just want to clarify some data points. So the first thing is, I'm wondering, what is the total amount that was budgeted for the animal shelter this year versus last year?
Suzie's gonna answer those questions.
Rick, are you asking for total expenditures or general fund contributions?
Hmm, total.
Okay. Let me get to that page.
Because that's basically how much money do they have to work with?
Correct.
Last year and this year?
Yep.
Wherever it came from.
Bear with me while I get to that correct page. Oh, um, so the total budgeted expenditures prior to the budget adjustment that Trent just mentioned is $369,000 for this fiscal year. Unfortunately, in my budget book, I don't have last year's budgeted numbers, but I do have last year's actuals, which are $315,876.
So it's 50,000 more.
The budgeted amount for 2324 is currently 50,000 more than the actual expenditures in 2223.
Okay.
And then, like Trent mentioned, we will be bringing a budget adjustment to reduce some of that cut and add some expenditures back into there, which will increase that even further.
Okay, thank you. And same question for the, if you have it there, is for the total sheriff's budget. Because I think one of the things that kind of struck me is, and I spent a whole career dealing with numbers and how you can present them, but what I heard was, whatever it was, like 57% of the cuts were in the sheriff's department. My recollection is that's also where we saw the largest increase in requests. Not that I challenge any of those requests, because I think we need all the law enforcement support we can get. But, so it just sounded like, oh, my gosh, we cut that budget by 57%, which what we were cutting was the requested amount, which, as I recall, included the greatest increase, request for increased headcount of any budget, which then translates into that answer. So I really just wanted to get down to, okay, bottom line, like with the animal shelter, how much money they have, did they spend last year, how much money they have to spend this year?
So unfortunately, I misunderstood your question when you sent it to me this morning, and I was not prepared for total budgeted expenditures to present that.
Okay, it's what you have. I'm sure you, what you interpreted is fine.
Based on general fund contribution overall to the sheriff and what that difference looks like.
Okay.
And then we can, I mean, we can flip through, I do have my budget book, and I can flip through the actuals versus the budgeted numbers for them, for each of those budget units, if you wanted to do that as well.
Let's hear what you've got first, and then I don't want to take up too much time for this.
So for the sheriff's budget units as a whole that were moved into their own, that separate sheriff's general fund, last year in fiscal year 2223, we allocated $6,612,381 in discretionary general fund monies to them. They turned around and requested for 2324, $7,943,298. And we were able to fund them at $6,583.
Six, nine.
$6,583,173, which is a $29,000 cut versus their general fund contribution in 2223.
Okay.
In 2223, they received 50.50% of our discretionary general funds, and in 2324, they're getting 46.34% of our discretionary general funds.
Okay.
And that is just for the sheriff's budget units.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we need to go into each individual thing, but thank you for offering. And then I just, because of this thing about the requests, because I know that we had a lot of challenges with people justifiably asking for more headcount, because we're asking a lot of them, and they often don't have the headcount to do what we're asking them to do, like the sheriff's department. I'm wondering, how many departments requested headcount that was not approved?
So excluding the sheriff's office, there was eight other general fund departments that requested additional FTEs that were not approved in this budget.
Okay. And what is the difference in the number of positions funded this year versus last year for sheriff and animal shelter?
Ask your question, will you tell me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Question, what is the difference in the number of positions funded this year versus last year for the sheriff's department and animal shelter?
So.
I know you gave me a wonderful headcount comparison sheet that I couldn't put my hands on this morning.
So funded positions across the sheriff's department as a whole in fiscal year 2223 was 54.5. Funded positions across the sheriff's office as a whole in the budget that's presented before you today is 47.8. The budget adjustment that we'll be bringing back to you on the 17th would increase that to 48.5.
So 48.5, and remind me the other number, 54.
54.
And this is where I'm remembering the sheriff, what we were going on were what were the filled positions at the time that the end or beginning of the fiscal year?
Correct.
Versus what was funded last year. And then the sheriff was highlighting that, you know, there is this oftentimes extended transition period when a vacancy is created because of recruiting and vetting and training and all those sorts of things. So the sheriff's department is dealing with was it five or six fewer positions? I'm, I'm sorry, six fewer positions that they can work with from what they had funded last year to what they have funded this year.
Correct.
The funding really aligned with what they had as actual filled at the time, again, coming back to the turnover and transition times and so forth. So, okay.
Well, and that funded level for 2324 not only aligned with what they actually had filled as of June 30 of 2023, but it also aligned with the average number of positions that they had filled throughout the last couple fiscal years.
Hmm.
So despite the fact that they've had that flexibility to do that, the average number of positions that they've, that they had filled over the last two fiscal years aligns with the level that we funded them at.
So that would tell me if we looked at salary expenses for last year and salaries funded for this year, they'd be pretty similar. Because if they were averaged those six positions lower, then they weren't spending the money, and we funded at a level that's similar. Okay. And again, I in no way want to diminish the importance of us someday being able to fund all the law enforcement positions we have. I completely agree that we are understaffed, probably significantly understaffed. And I'd also don't want to diminish that that's true in other departments as well, but that, you know, I, I just know that there can be, things can be interpreted in certain ways. I'm hoping I'm not creating a false impression of what I'm trying to get clarity for, but thank you.
Suzie, let me ask others, other supervisors, do you have questions? Suzie, are you able to add any further clarity, and you might not be able to, which is fine? You had said that there were eight other general fund departments who had requested increased staff that were not able to be approved at this time. Within those eight departments, do you know how many positions that represents?
Total, total unfunded requests, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
If you give me a minute, I can do the quick math.
Sure.
Yeah. 8.15. Okay. Okay, showing that each department could, each of those eight departments could use another little over one person each. Okay, thanks, that's helpful. All right. Okay, are there other questions? We, any discussion? All right. With that, we will open to public comment. So you will have three minutes, and if you could just kind of keep that moving, it would help us to move forward. The timer will appear on the.
I'm gonna read it really quick.
The timer will appear on the screen when you've got about 45 seconds left.
Where's the timer now?
It'll appear on the screen when you have that left.
Oh, when I only have 45 seconds.
Correct, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Christine Edwards, and I'm the president of TASSA and the former ACO. I'm here because on Monday, the sheriff said he was going to shut down the shelter to the public. If that happened, then all the dogs and cats will not be adopted and would be euthanized when their time was up. This is wrong and heartbreaking to me and many of the public. It is just death row for these loving strays and cats. It's very important to keep the shelter open to the public and have regular, consistent hours. We must open, must be open to adopt. That's their only chance. Last night, I got an email from the sheriff, from the sheriff saying that they did get the money they needed and that that the doors will remain open. I also spoke with Jill Cox, which I want to thank you for taking time with me, and let me know that the doors will remain open and that the sheriff can find that money in his funds. So that, or if any other money you get would be helpful for that 9,000, if we can figure out the 9,500. But I'm glad the doors are going to remain open. Please know that TASSA donates money for the, for the food, for the animals' medical bills. We spade and neuter shelter animals, so they are easier to adopt and donate to the spade and neuter program to help the public with their dogs and cats. TASSA also paid for a new washer and dryer, sheds for storage, and other things. What we, we do what we can to help our strays. We are their voice. Last year, we donated over 22,000. 10,000 was the spade and neuter program. Yesterday, a TASSA member transported 13 puppies that will end up in a, in a shelter in Brookings. This gave them more room. This has given them more room to, so they don't have to euthanize. It's crazy how many dogs and cats are down there at this time, so we must remain open so we can find these, find them forever homes. If we're not open, they don't get home. I want to thank the health department for funding the shelter and for giving the money to the sheriff so we can keep the doors open. Please make sure the shelter animals always have a safe place to be while waiting for a new home. We must always have a shelter that is open to the public. And that's why we're all here. Oh, and I did really good. And that's why we're here, because it's all about the animals, you guys. You know, I know there's times you say animals, they want animals more than people. Well, that's who we are. We're the voice of those animals, and we got to get them adopted, and they have to be open. And so I'm glad that you guys got the money, because at the time, Monday, when we heard they were going to shut it, it was terrible. So, okay, I guess I'll give my 20 seconds to someone else. Thank you for your time, and thank you for, let's, working together as a team, because that's what we want to do, because I know you all want to keep the shelter open too, and so does the sheriff. He doesn't want to shut it. That's not anything anyone wants to do. So, thanks.
Thank you, Christine.
Hi, Veronica Kelly Albe's Douglas City. I'm an animal lover, for sure. All of my animals are from the shelter, and I thank you. They're important members of my family. And I wanted to thank your budget team, CAO, and Suzie for working hard. I've watched this process for several years now, and our numbers girl really does know where everything's at, and she looks to support the community as a whole. I think it's admirable that you guys really dug deep to find a way to fund this. I know down the road, there'll be budget adjustments as new revenue may come in. You know, in the research from one of my friends, she found that 99% of dogs found on cannabis sites or in the community sometimes, the unlicensed animals, which we know if that money came in, 100 bucks a pop, that could help fund a lot. I don't know if, as you look down the road, maybe have funding, I don't know if any of the fines that people get come into the, to the animal shelter, but, yeah, and I'm not as deep in your numbers, but I do, I'm a numbers girl. And I'm always looking outside the box for funding. So just, I appreciate the creative way you support the community and look for your numbers. And Trent, thank you for the expertise you bring to this process as well. And so I just continue to ask to keep doing that, because every time something's come for salaries and other things, you've found a way. It's sad that we get to a point that everybody really has such anxiety about something so important to our community, the animal shelter, the library, and I could probably name 20 other things, and 20 other groups that will come in and say the same thing. But it's a lot of hard work. It's a lot of research. And you stand there and take whatever somebody wants to say to you, good, the bad, the ugly, and you do it with grace and move forward, because we are all community members. I see all of you at Holiday Market or the post office, and it's nice. And that is the beauty and the curse of a small town. So keep doing what you're doing. Thank you for doing what you do, and we'll see you at the budget adjustments.
Thank you, Veronica. Okay, seeing no more. Oh, good.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carly Sabine. I'm a resident of Douglas City. I just want to say I've never attended a public forum, let alone spoken up like this, and perhaps my comments are a little late or unfounded, knowing the news that the shelter is going to be open and funded. But I wrote this in support of funding the shelter, so I'm just going to voice my comments anyway. It does not take much to understand that our county has a massive stray pet population. All it takes, in fact, is a short drive along Highway 299 or a quick scroll through Facebook posts to stumble upon a box of abandoned kittens, a dumped guard dog, feral cats breeding everywhere exponentially. I'm sure each of us has been in that situation, and at that moment, we're faced with a choice to address it or to ignore it. And I'm also sure that many of us here have probably pulled over for a helpless animal. I know I have. And in that case, we rely on the shelter to take the reins. But what happens if the shelter is closed? Or what happens if we're turned away because they're already beyond max capacity? At that point, we have two options. Take the animal home or find a friend to take it home, which is entirely unrealistic for the vast majority of us, or let nature take its course. That's a nice way of saying, let the domesticated animal die, which may sound dramatic, but coming from personal experience, when one finds a litter of motherless nursing kittens and the shelter can't take them, that quickly becomes a reality. Our stray pet problem is a human-created issue, and so humans, we must be a part of the answer. And we don't have to be all the animal lovers to see the importance of, of funding the shelter. Yes, of course, the money provides aid to animals whose humans have let them down, but it also alleviates the burden of the community members who don't have it in their blood to turn a blind eye to helpless animals. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Carly.
Hi, my name is Katie Howard, and I was, I'm a resident of Weaverville now. I just moved here from Hayfork. I'd been there for 16 years. And I've adopted four animals from the streets. And with the help of the Hayfork Valley Spade and Neuter Program, and also, since that time, I've found a couple different animals that I've had to drop off at the shelter. And just due to the, like, to the lack of them being open regularly, you know, from morning till afternoon, I've had to hold animals, they've had to turn me away. I've had people suggest to me that I just take them back to the woods where I found them. I work in conservation, so I'm in the forest a lot. I couldn't stomach the thought of just dropping an unneutered male dog off in the forest, so I actually struggled to rehome animals on my own. I know there's a lot of people like me out there, and so I just wanted to say thank you for doing everything you can to keep the shelter open and to just try to realize that even try to realize that even with the hours we have, it seems like we could probably use a bigger shelter. I just, I know everybody already knows that, but I figured I'd stand up and say that, that I'll continue trying to support and foster animals as much as I can. And just like was previously said, it's obviously a human issue we've, we've, we've created. And we have all this national forest, which apparently seems to be a place where animals are dumped. I've seen it a lot and I've rescued multiple kittens and abandoned animals. So I'm in support. And now that I live in Weaverville, I hope to volunteer at the nursery, or nursery, the, I work at a nursery, so volunteer at the, at the shelter to just interact with animals as much as I can and help rehabilitate them. So I'm just in support of it staying open. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Michael Millerick, Weaverville. I wanted to make a few comments in reaction to some of the discussion that was had on Tuesday during the hearing then. You know, having lived here for five years, it's very depressing to watch the meeting and hear one of our lovely accountants say that they've given up on recommending avenues for the county to increase revenues. I very much agree with one of the statements that Rick made during the meeting, which is that you all, we, we as a county, all of us collectively, I guess, need to look at the harder and more strategic ways of making things happen. Now, this board has the opportunity to change the status quo. You're not bound by the decisions that others have made in past attempts that others have, you know, tried to increase revenues. Those ballot measures have failed. They'll have the opportunity to do something different going forward. You all have the opportunity to work with the public, figure out what policy changes could be made in order to hopefully have a successful attempt at increasing revenues for for the county. You know, as, as an example, you know, assuming that I read the county financial statements correctly and the total poverty tax revenue attributable to both the county and school budgets is about 30 million US dollars. Is that about right, Suzy, before I completely misspeak? It's about 10 million that goes to the general fund, correct? And two thirds goes to schools.
That's about right.
Yeah. So assuming that that's about right, two basis point increase in property tax, so a 2% increase in our property tax bills would raise $600,000 in revenue. If that were directed at the library, there goes your library problem. And that would increase the budget for the library by about 45% and give you $411,000 back into the county budget to spend on other things like the animal shelter or any of the other things that that the various different departments have advocated for. There's opportunity there. I'd be more than willing to pony up, pony up the 2% increase in my property taxes, $80 a year in order to meet those needs. You know, there's plenty of other opportunities. I know y'all are looking into the discrepancies related to cannabis ordinances. I do find it ridiculous that Red Barn needs to go through a completely different permitting process in order to meet their needs. I would question the same thing for any like farming operations as well. Why should the restrictions placed on them be any different than me if I wanted to put in an apple orchard for the county? Right? There is plenty of policy opportunities that the county can pursue in order to address some of these issues and actually drive economic growth for the county and do more than slash the bottom line of the budget because that's an unsustainable solution. Eventually, all of us are just going to leave the county because there's not going to be any opportunity for us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hello, I'm Jesse Glonsky, a member of community or Trinity County and Humboldt County. I'm not going to say anything different than everybody else says. It's a the shelter is already understaffed and under budgeted. There's 17 kennels and I believe there's at all times at least 20 dogs in 17 kennels. So to say, some, just last week, I want to say there was over 50 dogs there. I'm not, I don't know how, what would be the best, where, where to take money from to bring it there. But all I know is if there's a will, there's a way. Community members see that it's a major problem. To me, if we let the dogs run stray, you're going to have more rabies bites for kids. You're going to have more car accidents, which can lead to deaths and so on and so forth. All I say is there's a will, if there's a will, there's a way to make it happen. The animals need us.
Thank you, Jesse.
Hi, sorry, Teresa Blanco, Douglas City. And I actually have a request. I suppose it would be, I'm completely right brained. I was born without a left brain, so numbers are blah. Sheriff Saxon was kind enough to try to explain the route that funds take from, I guess, I forget which department, to the sheriff's department and somehow over to the shelter. I grew up in LA, so I'm very familiar with, like, I don't know if anybody else is else here is old enough to remember freeway maps, but I can still look at those freeway maps and go, okay, the 210 cut over to the two and then I get to fly. So I need, it would be really helpful for my pea brain and I think other people's brains to have some, I don't know, a flow sheet or a map, something really clear and simple showing how the funds get from point A to point, 3.5 to Z down to over here. Because it, again, as the sheriff was explaining, trying to explain the route, I could envision somebody in front of a pinball machine going and then the fund, and then that that fund route just going all over the place. As I said, no left brain, it's all right brain. So something like that, some clarity as to the root of the funds would be, I'd really appreciate it. And from talking to other people, I think other people would really appreciate an understanding clarity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa.
I think the homeschool children will thank you very much for keeping the libraries open because they do use them. So make sure you keep them open, please.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further public comment in the room, we will entertain those folks on Zoom. Ben Kellogg.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Staff. My name is Ben Kellogg. I am a resident of Weaverville, as well as a member of TASSA. I think we're all aware that the county coffers are in disarray, and I am happy to hear that the shelter is going to be fully funded this year. But unfortunately, we all know, no one has money. Budgets are being cut and badly needed positions are not being filled within the county. We heard from the sheriff that he only has money to run a shelter last week until December. After that, he said he was going to close the shelter. Can he actually do that? Yes or no? By law, the county has to have a shelter to house animals for pending court cases and other miscellaneous things. But yes, that means he can close the shelter to the public. That means no one will be able to adopt animals and the shelter's euthanasia rate will skyrocket. The shelter is not open full time as it is. Most people are under the impression that the shelter is a no kill. That's not true either. Due to space, highly adoptable animals are being euthanized. The shelter is busting at the seams. There is no magical genie that makes more space so that animals can be spared being killed. Closing the shelter probably means that people will be laid off. The shelter budget needs to be fully funded, not only this year, but in ongoing years, which includes next year's 24 budget. Closing the shelter would be a public safety issue with many more animals roaming the streets after being dumped. The county, unfortunately, in some ways, has done a disservice to the people they call their constituents. The county, through draconian policies, has left millions of dollars of revenue from cannabis licensing on the table that could have helped fund not only the shelter, but the sheriff's department, which for their tentative 2024 budget has a net loss of seven positions and a cut of 57% from what was requested. We have volunteer fire departments that through no fault of their own, have very little funding from the county and have to have bake sales, barbecue dinners, bingo nights, bunko nights, and other ways to fundraise just to pull the rig out of the bay to go on a call. That's a travesty. That needs to change. There needs to be parity between fire and the sheriff's department. Simple as that. The county needs to put hiring grant writers as a priority as well and stop slow playing approving cannabis licenses. Those licenses through tax revenue will make a substantial difference in filling the coffers of this county. We have to get creative. People always say we're the poorest county. That's partly true. We're the poorest county on paper. There's lots of money that changes hands that's not taxed. We also, everyone knows, can't pass a tax increase to save our lives. It's unfortunate, but it's real. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Adrian Keyes.
Hey, thank you. Good morning, Chair Supervisors. Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. I am so thrilled that you have managed to find the funds to at least partially fulfill the budget requirements of the animal shelter. I've been fostering dogs in Hayfork, well, since the beginning of the Hayfork Spay, Neuter and Hayfork Pet Rescue. I was Cindy Klein's first, first foster. We've probably fostered well over 40 dogs, some of them coming in the worst shape that you couldn't even imagine what we see. And it just breaks my heart and something needs to happen, not just to fund the animal shelter, but to change the mind and the attitude of some of our citizens. It's just pathetic. And that brings me to the tax increase. We did try and run the earmark tax a couple of years ago. I don't know if it's worth the supervisor's time or if they have the effort, time and effort to do it, but maybe try and put something else on again. Another increase, maybe earmarking it through the sheriff's department to animal control because this is just out of control. It's really, really, really sad. I've got one foster right now and I've got the one dog that I finally failed on after all these years. We just love too much to let him go. So he's living with us forever now. But we won't be able to foster dogs for forever. And the donations that feed the dogs that come through the spay and neuter clinic, we depend on that to feed these animals because we don't have the money to feed every dog in town. So thank you, and I do hope to see some progress in that. I would seriously consider trying to run another sales tax to try and fund some more of the animal control and maybe some in the libraries, you know, find some, some issues or maybe, you know, maybe give it up and just let it go to the general fund with your word, some sort of assurance from the board that those funds would be used for the things that the citizens actually want them to be used for. I'm also, I was a little bit disappointed looking in the backup today. I was expecting to see some case law that Ms. Long referred to that would justify the the questionable use of some of the funds from the cannabis department, the funds that appear to be being used more as a tax than as a fee. And we need to clean up a lot of these issues in the county, this being one of them. Animal control and libraries certainly rank high. Let's get our cannabis program up and functioning. For those who don't know me, I've been in the program since the very beginning. I'm license number 15. And I have wanted nothing more than a functional program and some stability and some consistency this whole time. And you know, we were on our way. We're real close to having it, but you know, I sure hope we get there soon and we can all move away from this conversation and on to these other really important issues. But thank you. Good day.
Thank you, Adrian. Karen. Karen Sundit. Okay. We can always return. All right. Thank you. With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Did anyone care to make a motion?
Move to approve as presented?
I will second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, a second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
With that, we will adjourn our meeting at 10:38. Thank you.